Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing employment issues, negotiations, and litigation. So at this time I'd like to ask for motion to reconvene the public session.
I move to reconvene the public session.
You second? I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
So, I want to start off by thanking the community for coming to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jeffrey Messner.
(Inaudible)
So, last Tuesday we had our budget vote and election for the school district and the library board. And as you all probably know, the budget passed by a wide margin, seventy-six percent. The school budget that is, the library budget passed by an eighty-two percent margin. We had a capital reserve proposition that also passed by seventy-four percent margin. And Holly McCall was elected to the school board and Elizabeth Hayneson was elected to the library board. So I want to congratulate the two for running. The election was uncontested, but just the fact that you were willing to stand up and put yourself forward and run for these boards is commendable and congratulations. And Holly, we look forward to working with you and I'm sure the library board looks forward to working with Elizabeth. There were challenges to the vote, to the process because of the weather. There were downed trees and wires, roads were closed, Metro North stopped working. So, many, many districts experienced problems of that nature. So voter turnout was particularly low this year. But, I have to say that NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association, has reported that over the past twelve years since the enactment of the tax cap, that voter turnout has decreased tremendously. It's decreased by thirty-seven percent since 2012. This is down by three hundred thousand votes. At that time, voter turnout was about eight hundred thousand, it's gone down to five hundred thousand. And last Tuesday, it went down nine point five percent from last year. So, you know, one of the good things is that school budgets are being passed at a greater, to a greater extent than they were, but certainly, community engagement has gone down a great deal. And so these decisions are being made by fewer and fewer people. So I would encourage everyone who's thinking about this to please think about it some more. Make sure you do fulfill your civic duty. It's an honor to be able to vote in a democratic society. And we, you know, parents move here mainly for their kids to experience a great educational program and do so many things for their kids on a daily basis. And so this is probably the most important thing to do because it keeps the schools running. And so I encourage you to make sure that you go out and vote, and if, I'm sure you all do, those of you who are of age here, but please encourage your friends and neighbors to do so. And, so anyway, thank you. We had a good election. I want to thank Lisa Elsner for running her first election as our district clerk. It ran very smoothly and thank you Lisa, you did a great job. So, I, at this time, I'd like to move one of the items, item 5.24, up in the agenda. This is the Twin Oaks Grant. And, I just want to check whether the representative for Twin Oaks is here today? That's okay. Alright, that's okay. She's not here. So, Twin Oaks is awarding a grant to the Horace Greeley Sports Boosters, which is a 501(c)(3) corporation. And the Sports Boosters is then taking the grant money and making a donation to the school district for the purposes of funding the high school fitness and athletic center project. It's being done within that structure to comply with Twin Oaks' governing bylaws and applicable laws. So, this fitness center, fitness and athletic center is going to be a wonderful addition to our high school. There are pictures here. We'll have a short presentation possibly. Our five hundred square foot wrestling gym is going to be redesigned as a fitness center, which will contain cardio area, a turf area for speed and agility training, weight training with weight machines and free weights and AV equipment. There will be a twenty-eight hundred square foot, our twenty-eight hundred square foot weight room will be redesigned as a mind-body studio with a dance bar with props for yoga, Pilates, and other movement disciplines, and there'll be AV equipment as well. There will be an exhibition gym and entrance displays with high-tech video score and media boards. And all of this will bring our athletic and PE program on par with all of the redesigned spaces in all of our schools. And it really underscores the importance of athletics and the phys ed program as part of our curriculum. And it will also be great for the entire community, even for people without kids in school, because this will be usable by our continuing ed program and they'll be able to have a lot of wonderful classes in this new facility. So Christine, do you want to?
So just very briefly, this was a tremendous amount of work between Sports Boosters, the Twin Oaks organization, and our administrative staff, particularly Jason, Simo, Joe Gormondo, and John Chow. So basically what our grant award will allow is for this current weight room to be moved into this space. So I want to thank the foundation in advance because they already contributed fifty thousand dollars to new equipment. And the Twin Oaks Grant will allow us to buy additional equipment and move some of our existing equipment into the current wrestling gym. And then this space will become a dance studio for our kids and for our community. And this is sort of, looks a little bit like what we're thinking will be in that space. We're definitely upgrading significantly. And, so we're really excited to begin this project. A lot of what we can do could occur over the summer. We do have some SED approvals that need to happen for the electronic pieces that will be going in here. But we hope to have everything up and running by January. Again, this is just another shot of a rendering of what that space has the potential look like. So it's really exciting for our kids, it's particularly exciting for our athletes who show up at six AM to work out every morning. We have a great space for them to be in. This is a little bit of what the dance studio is projected to look like. So not only will we upgrade our course offerings for our Greeley students during the day, but continuing education now, our dance courses and our yoga classes will have an appropriate studio for that to take place in. And then, we're going to be refurbishing our, there's a side gym and we're moving some seating in there because that will have to be used for our rec programs more often than it is now since we're taking office space. And probably one of the more exciting things that will be happening, it's not this wall that's being replaced, let me keep going, even though that's exciting for our coaches, is that we'll be replacing this scoreboard with sort of like a Jumbotron. And, so that's our current scoreboard and we'll be using something that looks like this. That can be operated off the iPad, it's more of a flat screen, so you can put, not that we would put advertisements on there, but you can definitely put animation and other kinds of things on there for our fans to see during our sporting events. So, we're really excited about this opportunity. We're very grateful to Twin Oaks and for Sports Boosters for helping facilitate this for our kids and for our community. And, it's just, it's just wonderful to be able to live in a place that values instruction in this way for our students. So, we're really pleased to be able to reshape that space for our kids.
Great. So, thanks Christine. So we're going to move up item 5.24, which is an agreement for donation. It's a three-way agreement between Twin Oaks, Sports Boosters, and the Central School District. And this will allow for the grant, the donation, and then the use of the funds as the three entities have anticipated. So, do we have a motion?
I move that, we accept 5.24.
I'll second. Okay. Any questions or comments by the board?
Thank you.
We're very grateful. Okay. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, so.
Everybody?
We're ready for the superintendent's report. Okay, so the first part of my report will be two appointment recommendations. And I'd like us to now consider the recommendation of Doreen O'Leary as our Roaring Brook Elementary School Principal. You want to go and explain her candidacy at this time? Okay. So, alright. So currently serving as the principal of Island Avenue Elementary School in Madison, Connecticut since 2013. Doreen began her career in education implementing a variety of instructional and assessment practices as an elementary school teacher for the Stanford Public School System. She also has served as assistant principal for Weston Public Schools before becoming a principal in her current position for five years. Her appointment is the result of a rigorous multifaceted interview process that included well over a hundred applicants. She met numerous times with various school and community stakeholder groups. And Kasum and I also had the opportunity to do a site visit at her current elementary school. Throughout the entire process, everyone spoke glowingly about Mrs. O'Leary's implementation of social-emotional curriculum, her deep understanding of teaching and learning practices, and her strong relationships with student staffs and parents, particularly when we went on the site visit. Committed to creating a positive school culture that is dedicated to meeting the needs of all students, Doreen is well versed in the implementation of high-impact practices including professional learning communities, instructional coaching, and balanced assessments. Among her other attributes, it is Doreen's strong background in elementary curriculum and a reflective approach to educational leadership that makes her the ideal candidate to lead Roaring Brook. So I'm very pleased to recommend her tonight for your consideration for appointment.
Okay, thank you Christine. Welcome, Doreen. We're very excited to have you here.
Welcome.
And, I would like to ask you Christine, whether or not you would like to introduce the other appointment because it's all part of item 4.1. Then we can move up the approval of that item, which would include the two appointments.
Is that what you would like?
That would make sense procedurally, I think that would be the easiest way to handle.
Sure.
And quickest way.
Okay. So then our, so Doreen will have her say a couple of comments after we act on her appointment. And so now, the other candidate that I'd like your consideration for tonight, who is here, is Dr. Tony Sineas, who is in the back, who will also ask us to come up and say a couple of comments. And we are recommending him to be our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Leadership. And currently, Tony is the superintendent for the Hastings and Hudson's Union Free School District. And he began his twenty-year educational career as a classroom teacher in New York City and in Long Island where he taught third, fourth, and fifth grades. He's also served as an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction in Long Island, as well as an Assistant Principal and a Principal in both Jericho and Valley Stream School Districts. Co-authoring of the book, Hacking Leadership, Dr. Sineas consistently impresses the multiple interview, consistently impressed our multiple interview teams throughout the search process. Given both his classroom experience and time spent in various leadership roles, Dr. Sineas is uniquely qualified to take on his new responsibilities, which include labor management meetings, negotiations, the APPR process for teachers and administrators, and oversight of the Human Resources Department, implementation of leadership professional development, and compliance with the state and federal requirements. What stood out about Tony is his proven track record of recruiting, supporting, and retaining Holly skilled educators. We are looking forward to having Tony join our team to support our cohesive community of learners and leaders through positive and collaborative relationships. So I'm also pleased to recommend Tony for appointment tonight as well.
Okay. Thank you Christine. So, I'd like to ask the board for a motion to approve the recommended action for personnel. Item 4.1, which includes the appointment of Dr. Senares, Senancis, I'm sorry, and Ms. Doreen O'Leary.
I move and accept the superintendent's recommendation.
4.1 instructional?
I second that.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So I'd like to congratulate Doreen and Tony. And Tony, thank you Travis, and then we'd like Tony to do the same.
Thank you. I have to say, I am humbled by your support and so excited to be taking on this position. Over the couple of weeks, several weeks of the search process, I had an opportunity to meet many different constituencies within the district, your staff, your parents, even your students. And I was so impressed by the outstanding level of teaching and learning that's going on in Chappaqua. I am really eager to make my own contribution to the good work that's going on here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doreen.
Thank you.
(Applause).
Hi, thank you so much. I want to start by thanking the Board of Education and Dr. Ackerman for this opportunity. Throughout the process, much like Doreen did such on, I had the chance to get to know a few of the teachers, the building leadership team, the district leadership team, special thank you to Kasum. And it was clear to me that this is an opportunity for me to learn and grow, but also to contribute my passion and expertise to a community that embraces innovation, that values academic excellence, and that also makes decisions based on what's best for kids. So I'm excited to be a part of a community like this and to partner with everyone here to learn and grow. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, so now we're going to move forward with our tenure process and actually, based on our last action, everyone has been tenured, so congratulations. But we all, we have prepared a few comments, so Jamie.
It was a challenging order.
We'd like you to come up and begin and maybe, Stephen, if you can come up next to Jamie because you're going to be first, so. I'd like to welcome Stephen to the Board of Education on his.
So, I was going to start by telling you why I'm recommending him. Now I'm going to tell you why you just granted him tenure.
Yeah, this is great.
So, and just.
Can you, I want to repeat you. Oh, I'm sorry.
(Laughter).
This is weird. You have to face us. This is just.
There you go, right there. (Laughter).
(Inaudible).
In just three years, Steve has had a huge impact on the Grafflin School community. As our general music teacher, Steve teaches all four hundred and thirty students that attend Grafflin. If you were to walk into his classroom on any day, any period, you would see young children singing, dancing, playing instruments, composing music, and having a very good time. Steve is also responsible for our instrumental music program. The majority of our fourth graders choose to take an instrument, and Steve gives them instrument lessons. If you were to walk into the instrumental music room at any time, you would see Steve playing a violin or viola, the cello or bass, saxophone or clarinet, trombone or flute. And I know I forgot one instrument because I know it's nine and I only listed eight, but you heard right, Steve plays all of those instruments. Every student at Grafflin also participates in an onstage performance every year. Each performance has a theme with songs and movement and narration, and lots of humor. And all of it is written by Steve. He also designs the sets and designs the costumes, makes the costumes too. So needless to say, Steve is incredibly talented. Steve, I want to thank you for your last four years of service for the children of Grafflin. As you, sorry, three years, yep, three years. And as you continue on this journey and you continue to spend your time teaching our students, I just want to remind you to continue to have patience, strive to inspire, listen and watch, laugh, never stop learning yourself, connect, work hard, and Team Grafflin is incredibly lucky to have you. Congratulations. (Applause). Carol?
You could stand off to the side a little.
This is definitely better.
So again, this is, I'm going to share with you why Carol's so special. Over the last three years, Carol has developed into a fine teacher. Her classroom is a place where different ideas are valued, students are respected, mistakes are just a part of the learning process, and the work doesn't feel like work. Last year, Carol received a grant from CSF to purchase innovative classroom furniture. She researched classroom environments and imagined a place where every student could be the best version of him or herself. Her classroom now resembles a Google workspace where students discover who they are as learners and explore different ways to do their work. If you were to ask any of her current fourth graders, they would say that their classroom is a place where learning is fun and individual work styles are celebrated. Social-emotional learning is extremely important to Carol. She weaves conversations about acceptance, relationships, and feelings into almost every lesson, even math. If you doubt that fractions can be touchy-feely, just stop by Carol's classroom. Carol has also been a model of learning for her students and is always looking for ways to enhance her professional skills. She takes advantages of every opportunity to tend to work, to attend a workshop or conference, participate on a learning team, or join a study group. Thank you, Carol, for these last three years of service to the children of Grafflin. As you continue on your journey as a teacher in Chappaqua, please always remember to have patience, listen and watch, laugh, never stop learning yourself, connect, and finally, Team Grafflin is really lucky to have you. (Applause).
Congratulations, Carol. Okay, next up is Jason, Jason, and Josh, you can come up. You're coming? Yeah. James, I'm sorry, James, James. Sorry about that.
I'll say it.
James.
You can say wherever.
Sorry, James, James.
You don't have to worry. (Laughter). Block me, that's perfect. James teaches math and computer science at the high school. When in his classes, first off, you see his students laughing, having fun, and enjoying learning. You always see rigorous environment in your room. James is rarely in, you rarely see James in front of the classroom. You always see him circulating around the room, coaching students, asking questions, and really facilitating learning, all the things that we truly value in the Chappaqua school system. Over the past few years, James has become an integral part of the degree of the community. James has jumped in to teach physics when needed, math, and immersed himself in learning and teaching our computer science classes, starting from nothing, right, to being an incredible computer science teacher. He coaches and is a member of our emergency response team. James is probably the hardest working person that I've ever met. He has come to many STEAM, math, and coding professional developments. He was a member of our Innovation Fellows. James has also proven himself to be a teacher leader, notably now teaching an in-service course for more teachers than I ever would have thought, learning Java in the high school. And more importantly, James knows more about construction than anybody that I have ever met before. And if you have any home problems, James is the person to go to. And he claims that he is going to complete a kitchen within four days. That's his plan. That's his tenure plan. And we're super, and we're super happy to have you here and I look forward to the years of professional growth and working with our students. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Very good, Jessica. Yeah. Jessica?
The question's touchy-feely.
You're up.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Jessica. Jessica Marquetti began in our district a little more than three years ago. At that time, the members of the professional development team knew that we were fortunate to have Jess join our team, but we had no idea how lucky we really were. Although she never mentions it, and I mean never, Jess has a quite impressive resume. She holds degrees from both Dartmouth and Stanford Universities, as well as an administrative certificate from Baruch College. Prior to coming to Chappaqua, she worked as a chemistry and biology teacher, as well as an assistant principal at two Manhattan High Schools. Once she arrived, she quickly became part of the PD team and the high school faculty. She supported Greeley teachers with their inquiry, deepened their work, and supported all of the I Fellows. Soon after, Jessica took on a district-wide role and redesigned projects like our mentoring program, problem and project-based learning, and supported teachers with science instruction and our new New York State Science Learning Standards, K-12. This year she starts even work with our elementary teachers even more. Jess has also supported teachers with studies of space, classroom redesign, and particularly at Bell with the Bell Learning Lab. In three short years, Jess has become a treasured member of our faculty and a behind-the-scenes leader who moves much of our critical work forward. I feel honored to recommend Jessica Marquetti for tenure.
(Applause). Hey, Kyle.
Cal, hold your. Calm down, you're the next contestant.
Okay. Kyle has been our assistant principal at Greeley and I am pleased to present him tonight to the board for a tenure. When I first arrived in Chappaqua, I had to meet with a few students who graduated and at least three of them referred to Kyle as a tank. And I had no idea what that meant, so the kids went on to talk about how Kyle was just a solid guy. And I have to tell you, I agree with that assessment. Kyle is a solid guy. He is everywhere. He's in the classrooms, he's at the activities the kids are participating in, he's on field trips, he's at the games. You can tell he loves working with our students and in turn, our students, parents, and faculty regularly articulate to me how much they value him as an administrator and as a person. Kyle has strong instructional insights and works well with adults to help shape classroom practices. His observational comments are constructive and progressive. He leads his departments in conversations that are centered on rigor and inclusiveness. While we congratulate Kyle on his tenure tonight, I also must congratulate him on his new role as principal of Edgemont High School, starting in July. So, it's bittersweet, so Kyle, I'm pleased to recommend you to the board for tenure, but I'm also sad to see you go, but I'm really happy for your opportunity and you've done a lot for our district, so I just want to thank you. (Applause). Mary Ford.
I don't know if I can really do Mary Ford justice because she's been here for twenty-one years, but she's up for tenure, so. I mean, it's kind of odd, but I'm going to try to do my best here. So Mary started here as a classroom teacher in Roaring Brook. And she's also been a reading specialist and tonight she's receiving her tenure as the Director of Literacy. Mary has been instrumental in supporting our reading and writing workshop program. She has worked with our teachers on their instructional practices and unit planning. She has helped lead and facilitate discussions across all schools to align our grammar and phonics programs. Mary has been instrumental in securing the very best professional development for our teachers and she herself is considered among many of our colleagues as a master instructor. Instructor. You know, it's, when you sit with, when I stand here with Mary, who's been here for so long and has had such an opportunity to touch the lives of so many educators in our district, I really feel fortunate that I can, that I had had the opportunity to work with Mary over the course of the school year. And I know that Mary's off to Katona as an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. And she'll do an excellent job in that role in that district, and I know that we're very sad to see her go, but I also know that that will be a great opportunity for Katona to be able to grow and under Mary's leadership and particularly in the reading and writing workshop model. So, again, I'm very pleased to be able to stand before you tonight, asking you to grant her tenure, which you already have done. And I'm very fortunate to be able to have had an experience working with Mary over the course of this year and to wish her well in her next phase of her career. So, congratulations to Mary and I know that many of our staff in the next few weeks will be expressing the same sentiments to her and wishing her well as she continues on her career and her new role. So, thank you, Mary. (Applause). Kasum?
I'd just like to say that Kasum told us all we couldn't make comments tonight and I think that was selfish because she didn't want anyone to make any commentary on her, but come stand next to me. Okay. So, Kasum is concluding her third year as the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Leadership Development in our district. In my short time working with Kasum, I have found her to be a critical partner and friend as we, John, Kasum and I, navigate the sometimes complicated landscape of our district. Kasum is intelligent, she is assertive, she's willing to take on the most difficult conversations on behalf of our students. Kasum's counsel and support for our leadership team is absolutely invaluable. Perhaps what strikes me most about Kasum is her profound integrity. Perhaps what strikes me most about Kasum is her profound integrity. She's one of the most genuine people I've ever had the opportunity to work with. And again, I'm in the situation where I'm recommending her for tenure to you tonight, but I also want to take a moment to wish her well as she takes on the superintendency next year in Garden City. And I'm sure we all look forward to hearing of all the wonderful future accomplishments that Kasum will be able to partake in in that role. So, Kasum, thank you for everything that you've done for this district, and we, again, in the next few months, will be wishing you well as you transition to the superintendency. So, thank you, Kasum. Andrew, my last... our last candidate here. So, Andrew's staying, so he goes last, and he gets the longest comments. Okay. Andrew Casilia, who's here with his beautiful family, is our principal of Seven Bridges Middle School, but he's also been here a really long time, just like Mary. So, I just want to begin by saying, as the district grants Andrew tenure tonight, it was quickly... became quickly very clear to me, as a new superintendent in this district, that Andrew's administrative potential is absolutely limitless. Recommending him for tenure is one of the easiest things I've done since arriving in Chappaqua. Andrew cultivates very strong relationships with everyone in his school community. He's responsive to our students, to our parents, faculty, and staff. He builds and sustains relationships through his professional approach, humanistic demeanor, cognitive coaching, and his mere presence in the classrooms and at events. He is transparent, he is funny, he knows how important it is to know each student personally and works diligently to ensure he makes these connections. He's self-reflective. Andrew articulates a solid understanding of highly effective pedagogy. He shares his insights with faculty in his casual walkthroughs, department and faculty meetings, as well as in the formal observational process. He is able to weave constructive feedback masterfully in his conversations with faculty to cultivate change in a manner that is constructive. In administrative council, Andrew uses his teacher voice to help craft the best learning opportunities for our students. I couldn't ask for a better colleague when working through difficult curricular decisions district-wide than Andrew. So, Andrew, I'm so pleased to be able to recommend you tonight for tenure to our Board of Education. We are profoundly lucky to have you as an administrator in this district, so your family should be very proud of you. Well, we have all granted you tenure. Congratulations, our heartfelt congratulations to everyone, and I want to tell the administrators who are leaving to go on to better, you know, are really being promoted to positions. It just feels like Chappaqua is a really great training ground for our surrounding districts and perhaps the entire state. So, it really just shows that our practices here really do build on what people already know. Kasum, congratulations, you're going to be a superintendent, that's wonderful. Kyle, you're going to be a principal. And who else is leaving?
Mary.
Mary's going to be Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum in Katona, so congratulations to all of you and to everyone who's received tenure. It's well deserved. So, now, before we move on to the next part of our agenda, we can take a five-minute break, so that anyone who wishes to leave can do so without...
Why not?
Without me to obfuscate.
All right, so, thank you. Okay, so, thank you, everybody. I just wanted to just take a minute again to congratulate all of our tenure candidates, and I'm so happy to be able to welcome Doreen and Tony to our district, so we'll send those press releases out tomorrow afternoon. I also wanted to just let our families know that we've reopened the Grafflin search, so we'll be working on that the next month to hopefully have someone in place by July 1st. So, we'll continue to update you on where we are with that process. So, our next piece of the superintendent's report is our interactive update, and Vicki, if you would like to maybe do an introduction as to how we came to this place today, and then Kasum will take over and present how we are moving forward.
Okay, so, I would just like to do an initial wrap-up of how we came to be here, and just to put everything into context, especially for anyone who might be listening for the first time and wondering what it is that we're discussing. So, at the end of September last year, there was a board meeting at Bell. It was a difficult meeting, and the community and school officials were really grappling with a... essentially a trauma of what had happened in the Christopher Schroffnagle aftermath. And we promised the community that we would hold an independent review of the district regarding the issue of sexual misconduct. There had already been a full investigation by the Newcastle Police Department and the Westchester DA's office. So, on November 2016, we convened a committee. The board appointed two liaisons to the committee, that was Jeffrey and myself. We convened a committee of individuals from the community who were appointed by a cross-section of organizations who serve the youth of the school district. These were the PTA, District PTA High School, and an elementary school PTA, but all of these individuals had students representing all levels of the school. We had Friends of Greeley Theater, a school psychologist appointed by R-21K, a community for youth represented by the Reverend Martha Jacobs. We had sports boosters, the town rec department, the Newcastle Police Department Youth Officer, Detective Carrato. We had two Greeley students. Jeffrey and I were the two Board of Ed member, and we had Kasum as the administrative liaison. So, we had a total of 15 members. The committee was charged with drafting an RFP to find an expert in the field to conduct a review and analysis of school policies, procedures, and practices around sexual misconduct, abuse, harassment, and discrimination, and to submit a report of their findings with recommendations for improvements and training of staff, students, and parents. The RFP was drafted after several meetings and much discussions regarding the issues facing the school district, and the parameters of the RFP were set, and it was sent out and advertised. We had two firms respond, and the committee read and discussed the submissions and held Skype interviews. We chose Interactive, Inc., led by Cheryl Shakeshaft and Dale Mann. So, Cheryl Shakeshaft focuses on sexual misconduct of adults in a school setting. She's a well-known expert in the field. She is the most sought-after expert witness in the United States in lawsuits brought by families against school districts for sexual abuse of children. She's been an expert witness in more than 100 related suits. The 104th Congress directed the executive branch to conduct a national analysis of the incidence of sexual abuse by children, and they commissioned Dr. Shakeshaft to conduct the analysis and report it to the department and Congress. She is also... has postgraduate training in statistics, and she teaches graduate courses in research methodology. She works with Dr. Dale Mann, who is a professor emeritus at Columbia University, and is managing director of Interactive. He has produced over 200 evaluations of educational programs and has been involved with educational improvement since the 1960s with service in Washington, including a special analysis for education to the executive office of President Lyndon Johnson. So, we had very well-regarded and well-trained experts conducting the review. Their work involved surveys, focus groups, interviews, review of hundreds of pages of documentations consisting of policies, regulations, et cetera. They conducted the work last spring and this fall. They submitted a report on December 6, 2017, and now we will have Kasum talk about their recommendations, what our follow-through has been, and next steps.
Okay. So, I think what I'll focus on is really the recommendations and where we are today. And also, in this presentation, we'll talk about what we need to continue to do in our district, even beyond what was stated in the report. So, and I just want to briefly, in terms of their findings and conclusion, one of the things their focus was really our policies, procedures, and practices. One of the things that they said that we, in terms of conforming to the standard of care, related to best practices, we had that. There was one in one of our policies that relate to unwelcome advances, which should be removed, and this is really related to adults and students, and that we did. We removed that from our policy. And just for the... on our website, on the front page, under, I think it's the last tab, it says "RFP," these reports are there for our community. So, there, and this I just took right from the report, the different recommendations that they had made. And the two primary recommendations that were here was, again, removing all references to unwelcome sexual advances, and the very last one is to develop a summary of Common Language Employee Code of Conduct about sexual misconduct. We actually... that policy was approved in April, and that policy is very, very comprehensive. It really spells out some of the other recommendations that are up there in terms of giving examples of misconduct. If you go to the... Can you go one more? So, if you look at the policy that was adopted, again, in April, that policy, and this is just an introduction that I put on... that I have up there, but if you read the whole policy, it really describes behaviors, adult-to-student interactions, and it encompasses even our electronic communication policy in there, in terms of how are we communicating with our students. And so, this is also the link to the policy itself. And again, I think it's so comprehensive that any... and it's in plain language, so there's no, you know, in terms of legalese in there, but anybody can read it and really get an understanding of this policy. We've disseminated this to our faculty and staff, and again, this will be part of this annual training for not just our faculty members, but also our students, so they fully understand this policy. So, kind of going back to our actions taken with the recommendations that were made, the two main things where the... that's encompassed in is in the code of conduct and the sexual misconduct policy, and also that we've removed the unwelcome advances, and we have added the examples within our policies. And when we do the annual training with our administrators and faculty and staff, we really stress on that. So, one of the things is that not only do they get this electronically to read it, but it's reviewed with them, and not just this policy, but all of our important policies that are related to adult and students. So, for example, the bullying, the sexual harassment, our student code of conduct, all of those things, there's about 10 of them that are really, really important policies. We review that. It's not just reading it, but really reviewing it during faculty meetings.
And Kasum, I'd just like to add, the reference to unwelcome sexual advances was meant originally to refer to student-to-student interaction. So, we did explain that to them, and they understood. I mean, the recommendation still stood, and you know, we did decide to remove it, but that reference never applied to adult-to-student. So, that was... and that policy actually did state that any adult-to-student interactions that fell within this category would be deemed unwelcome per se. So, you know, they... I just want to make clear that we never apply that language to adult-to-student, and they did understand that explanation.
That's right.
But we removed it anyway, just to be absolutely clear and thorough.
That's right. We did remove it because of that, to just have just additional clarity. But our policy is one of the things that they did say, that our policies were pretty comprehensive, but we did, again, the simple language one that we just adopted. I think that's an important one for our faculty and staff. The further actions that we've taken in the district is related to supervision. For the past, I would say, about two and a half years, are really focused on more adult supervision in the hallways, especially in areas that are vulnerable or that's not as visible, and we extended our time with our security personnel, especially after school. So, there's a lot more of that in our buildings, the policy training that I just spoke of, the annual policy training, and throughout the year at faculty meetings. We also, this year for the high school, we had more student forums where we discussed some of these policies with our students, with real-life scenarios and examples. The Safer Smarter Schools Program, this was the first year that we implemented it fully, and K through 12, our... the committee will meet again this summer to tweak the program, to see what went well, what else do we need to add to the program, and that'll continue in our district, and that program is really related to student appropriate relationships with adults. It does encompass sexual abuse, and also in terms of decision-making. So, I think it's a good program that we have. We have the reporting system, the anonymous reporting system, which we had started originally. That was something we created in-house, and now it's something that's more easily accessible for not only our students and community, but also for the district. And the Social/Emotional Program, K through 12, we started Ruler at the high school last year that's focused on, really, on our emotional well-being, and that'll be now, next year it'll be carried on at the middle school. So, the focus is really on adult training and then student training. Okay. And next steps, again, we want to continue our annual training and update, you know, regarding our policies and supervision with a focus on awareness and enforcement, and that's been like, kind of like a mantra we've been talking about, and the more we know, the more we... we're aware of it and we can enforce it. And one of the things that we've been talking about is looking at different modalities for staff training, rather than just giving something to read or explaining what are other ways. This year, we introduced a video series with this vendor we went with, and that was helpful, but I think we can go even beyond that. Again, continue to provide annual training to students. At all of our buildings, K through 12, we do that, and we've actually expanded that at each level. Provide... we want to provide the Board of Education analysis of all incidents reported by schools and categories through the anonymous alert at the end of each semester, so I'll have that for the board, that analysis. Develop a data collection point to assess our effectiveness of the Safer Smarter Schools Program, that I think this year we will come up with what are the data points that we want to collect. And then, again, our K-12 Social/Emotional Curriculum that has been identified in our strategic coherence plan, that'll continue, and the focus is on the Ruler Program, that's through Yale University. We also want to look at a communication plan to disseminate information to our school community related to student safety, and one of the things that we had... we talked about was to create something on our district website that has information available to our students and our community, and then, again, report on student safety at, maybe at the Board of Ed meetings, make that as an annual thing, district newsletter, provide information, give information to our PTA Executive Council, discuss some of these things at principal coffees, and our student government at the secondary levels, and with our parents at incoming kindergarten and the transition years, 5th and 9th grade. And the other thing that I think would be a great... a good thing for our school to do is to create a committee that meets twice a year to discuss the recommendations and to really make sure we're on top of what we've worked these last two years on. And again, I made suggestions for the membership as well.
Thank you, Kasum. Thank you very much, Kasum. I just want to really to thank you for doing a tremendous amount of work on this since, you know, early last year. I think your work with HR is a huge job that you've done so well, but you took this on as well, and this was really over and above. You really spent a lot of time on this. I want to recognize you for that, and I will always be very grateful for the support that you showed us at a very difficult time. And I want to thank all the administrators here for doing the same. Okay. Thank you, Kasum.
So, my last piece of information I'd like to share is, next meeting on June 13th, the Greeley Security Task Force, they've been meeting regularly, and they should have some recommendations for the board's consideration for implementation in September, and I wanted to thank the town of Newcastle for providing police support for us for the rest of the school year, so I just wanted to acknowledge that in our meeting tonight. So, we'll look forward to those recommendations at our next meeting about what our Greeley community's been thinking about in terms of how to address some of the concerns that were raised during the... I think your work with HR is a huge job that you've done so well, but you took this on as well, and this was really over and above. You really spent a lot of time on this. I want to recognize you for that, and I will always be very grateful for the support that you showed us at a very difficult time. And I want to thank all the administrators here for doing the same.
Okay. Thank you, Kasum.
All right.
So my last piece of information I'd like to share is next meeting on June 13th, the Greeley Security Task Force, they've been meeting regularly, and they should have some recommendations for the board's consideration for implementation in September. And I wanted to thank the town of Newcastle for providing police support for us for the rest of the school year, so I just wanted to acknowledge that in our meeting tonight. So we'll look forward to those recommendations at our next meeting about what our Greeley community's been thinking about in terms of how to address some of the concerns that were raised during the feedback process we went through with our community.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Christine. So we'll move on to the committee reports. Warren, do you want to start with audit?
Sure. Let me get my notes out here. So we had an audit committee meeting on Monday, May 21st. We didn't have a quorum, but we had, Nikki and I were there, and Dean Rock, who's also on our committee, was there, along with Christine, and John, and Blanche Blair, as well as our external, internal auditors. We didn't, we didn't have to take any action, so that was okay. For the external audit, we discussed the planning process, that they gave us some documents that they were going to take up for, at the end of this year, which starts on July 1st. So as they do every year, they'll start their audit on July 1st, or on or about. We discussed the district's plans to consolidate resources, consolidate reserves, not reserves, we have a few reserves that we haven't touched. I don't know, John, they haven't been touched since you've been here, right?
Right.
So we're going to take, reduce those reserves and put those into the general reserve fund.
And we're asking the board to take action tonight.
Right, we're going to ask the board, right, that's on our agenda, thank you. We also discussed that we, we explained that we did pass the capital reserve fund, the reserve fund for capital, for $10 million. I know we had some people ask questions about this. One of the reasons we did it is New York State passed their law, and we're allowed to, a number of districts in Westchester and Putnam County have done that. Let's see, in the October, September, October meeting, the external orders will discuss Gatsby 74 and 75 with the presentations, but we'll go into that now. With regard to the internal audit, we discussed, we had an intensive review of resources and capital projects, that's what we, that's what we concentrated on. The revenues that we looked at were tax, border properties, building aid, food services, gifts, continuing education. Couple, couple of recommendations, but nothing outstanding that was, that blatant that we weren't doing, we're doing, put Johnny's team to a great job. Some of the recommendations, a couple of recommendations, just to tighten up some of the processes. We discussed charitable contribution to offset the salt, state and local tax issue that the federal government is dropping on us. We'll probably, we'll talk about that in September again. We don't know, we'd like to do something about that. We don't know where we're going with it because we don't know if the IRS is going to actually allow us to do it. So we have to be prepared that we can do it, but we have to just watch out. We don't want to be giving charitable contributions and finding out the IRS tells us we can't do it, and everybody has to go back and redo all the work. That's about it, it was a good meeting. Vicky or Christine, you have anything to add?
No, that was a very good summary of the meeting.
John, is there anything, anything you'd have to add?
Chair covered everything.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you to the chair of the audit committee. We have two policies on the agenda. We have, and I'm going to, we're going to request that these policies be passed after a first reading instead of two readings, and I'll explain why. With the first, the meals charging policy, this is as a result of a new statute that was passed, and we have to be in compliance by July 1. So we do have some time, but the state is also auditing lunch policies, school lunch policies, so it's really best to have a policy on the books as soon as possible. So the purpose of this policy, the purpose behind the law was to protect children from shaming at lunch if they're, they have low balances or owe money to the school from the, for the lunch fund. So the requirement is to give the child a meal regardless of the low or negative balance in their account. It also, interestingly, gives parents the ability to request to not give children a meal. So that may seem odd, but our lawyer explained to me that sometimes, you know, kids forget to hand in the checks or monies, and sometimes parents want to teach their kids to be self-reliant. But any event, the law gives them the ability to do that. I know that we cannot use a collection agency if there is a negative balance. However, these schools can bring lawsuits. So basically, you know, I don't want to reread the whole policy, I'm not sure everyone's had a chance to look it over. We have different, different things that happen depending on, if there's a minimum balance, there's an online alert to parents. When there's a negative balance, the district commences a communication procedure. Communications have to be discreet with parents and never to the child. For, in the case of free and reduced lunches, if the district finds that the parents have not really filled out the appropriate forms notifying the district that they're eligible, that the district can and should fill out the forms for them. And, you know, the only, the only recourse I can see that we have to collecting money is to keep notifying the parents of the low balance, you know, other than, other than a lawsuit, which I don't think we ever want to do.
I think, I mean, this is not materially different from what our practice was and has been, that kids couldn't get all cart items if they had a negative balance, but they could get a meal. But now it's just, we have to have a policy, so.
Right, and you have to be careful to not address the issue with the children.
Right.
The reality is this is exactly what we're doing right now.
Right.
Normally, things like this are-
Except for they do tell the kids.
I think, I think what happens is we have certain school districts that go rogue, and then policies are written to make sure that we all are in compliance, and that's a product of what this is right here. So you read about a couple of cases in newspapers where some people use some really bad judgment, so all of us, we're going to make sure we're on the same page, so. There's nothing in this policy that is not easily for us to comply with that we're not already complying with. This is really a non-issue for us in our district.
It's more of a training for the staff and who they're supposed to tell, not to communicate through kids.
Anyway, we need this policy on the books. I think it's pretty well-written, and I think that if we find areas that are uncovered or need to be tweaked, we can always tweak a policy.
No, I think it states it rather clearly, I think it's kind of.
Okay. So I'd like to ask that-
What they knew with this law is, actually, I had to provide an action plan to the commissioner by July 1st. That's a requirement.
You need an action plan, okay, so it would be helpful to have the policy now?
Yeah, so this would be the attachment.
Yeah.
So may I have a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the charging?
We need the second reading.
Okay. May I have a motion to waive the second reading for the new policy 5028?
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve this new policy 20, I mean, 5028?
So moved. I'll second.
Any further comments?
There was a question that we had, and I don't know if we've ever implemented, but said that you don't pick up your diploma unless your balance is zero or greater. Does this affect that?
Is that true?
Is that true?
It is true.
Does this affect that?
No, because this doesn't mention that, but there's-
It's not denying, this is about denying on a lunch, it's not about their diploma.
There is a, in the policy.
Okay. Does that answer?
That answers my question.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, then we have a new policy, 4770. This is about participation in graduation ceremonies by children with disabilities. There's, there's a recent law to address a practice by some schools who are not allowing students with disabilities to walk in graduation, even if they had commencement credentials. So commencement credential is, for instance, a career development in occupational studies credential, or a skills and achievement credentials, which we provide here. And so this is basically allowing those students with those credentials to walk with their ninth-grade cohort at their graduation ceremony.
That's really basic, that's basically it, is there anything else about this policy?
No, I actually support all the policy. So what happens is, again, you have districts that went rogue and said, probably, I'm only, you're only allowed to walk in graduation if you have a local or region's diploma, which eliminated students that had disabilities that aren't able to achieve that, so they write a policy to make sure that we're all complying. So, I mean, every aspect of this, even the optional piece, I would recommend that we adopt as a district. The optional piece says that you could actually walk in two ceremonies if, let's say, you earn your CEDOC credential with your cohort, and then maybe two years down the road, you actually get a local or region's diploma, you can walk again. Yes, we're not, right? We support it. So, I mean, I think you could consider following the same practice you did for the previous policy and adopt this tonight.
It would be nice to adopt this before graduation, so.
We've never, we've never prevented anybody from walking.
No, of course. But we might as well, it's nice to have this on books anyway.
It's unfortunate to me that we have to put this policy in place, because I can't believe anybody would-
Deny someone walking, right.
But whatever.
So many laws are put on the books because someone did something that they shouldn't have done, and then therefore, everybody is affected. Any other, any other questions on the board? Okay, may I have a motion to waive the second reading on item 2.2 for policy 4770?
I move to waive the second reading for policy 4070.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to accept the graduation policy, 4770?
I move, we accept the graduation policy 4770.
I second that.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
To be clear, that was moving entirely, including the optional.
Yes.
Anything else?
Okay. We'll move on to the public comment period. Anyone who would like to make a public comment, please come up to the microphone, and you can identify yourself, and you will have three minutes to make your comment. Anyone?
Don't all jump at once?
Okay. Seeing that there are no public comments, we can move on to the business portion of the meeting. So we'll move on to approvals and ratification. I'd like a motion to approve items 3.1 and 3.2, the minutes of April 26th and of May 2nd.
I move we accept the minutes as amended this afternoon.
I second.
Change it sent to me on something?
It wasn't the minutes.
It wasn't the minutes, it was 3.3.
Oh, never mind.
Okay, you have to, you have to withdraw your motion.
I withdraw the incorrect motion and correct that to say, I move we accept those two minutes.
And I second. The second motion.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.2, non-instructional.
We got 3.3.
Oh, I missed it.
Hang on. We have to approve item 3.3. May I have a motion to ratify the report of the budget vote, the proposition in the election of May 15th, 2018?
So moved.
I second. As amended.
We have amended.
We have amended, it was amended prior to getting here, so we're fine, we're approving it as it is now.
I second that.
Okay. Does anyone want to, want to comment on the election?
Thank you to the community for coming out and voting.
Despite the condition.
Oh, and I forgot to thank the volun, I would like to thank the volunteers who were organized by the PTA and the League of Women Voters. Every year, people volunteer and come in early to work at the polls, and they stay late, and it's a big community effort to organize this as well, so I want to thank you very much.
It was particularly challenging, so another thank you to Teresa, like, running a very challenging election this year, so thank you.
Thank you for your first, like I said before, thank you for your first election, you did a great job.
Thank you, Teresa Markley.
Oh, Teresa Markley has been here, yeah, Teresa has been back, and she has been lending a hand. It was challenging because we have a new district clerk and a new superintendent, so.
So I'd like to finish.
And tornado.
So again, thank you to the community for coming out and voting, and congratulations to Holly for being elected and joining us next year.
You can change your mind, Holly, just don't guess one in.
Right, you have to tell it about, I think, what, July 10th, or July of school board meeting? But anyway, congratulations, and we welcome you.
Welcome.
So we, we voted on, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor of item 3.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we went through item 4.1, we're ready for 4.2.
We're so excited about 4.2, non-instructional, I recommend it, as written.
Good.
I move we accept the superintendent's recommendation on item 4.2.
I second. Any, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve items 5.1 and 5.2, the CSC summaries for the 2017-18 school year, 2017-18 school year, and for the 2018-19 school year, reported to the board today on May 23rd. So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion to approve item 5.3, which is, which is to ratify provisions of the memorandum of agreement executed for CSCA, and as stated in the agenda.
I move item 5.3.
I second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we just hit the pause button?
We want to add something.
I just wanted to thank, after, thank you for approving their contract. I'd like to thank Mario and his team for their leadership, and our negotiation team, which is John, Joe, Kasum, and myself, I'm not thanking myself, I'm thanking my team, for helping work over the course of this year to come to an agreement with our custodial unit. So again, I wanted to publicly thank the district's team, but also Mario and his team for-
And I'll thank you, if you won't thank me.
We are very appreciative of the collaborative spirit that we see, and we're very fortunate.
Is that what you were going to say, John?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And I also want to say that Christine was a great leader for our side, the negotiation, but both parties worked very well together.
Yes, we're very grateful to everyone involved, so thank you to everyone. Okay. So now we'll move on to, hang on, we did vote.
We did.
Okay, move on to 5.4. I may have a motion to authorize the termination, this is a motion to establish a debt service fund?
No, no, no.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
No, this is-
This is a motion, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is a motion to, for the termination of certain funds and to move that money to the new capital reserve fund. There's a termination of the debt service fund, the property loss reserve fund, and the unemployment insurance reserve funds, which total in the amount of $224.7,000, which will go into the new capital reserve fund.
I move item 5.4.
I second that.
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, this is what I was speaking about when I was giving, except I did misspeak, I said it was going to go into the unrestricted funds, go into the capital reserve.
The new capital reserve.
Correct.
Now I thought you made that one. Okay. Anything else? John? See? Nope? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to, if I can, take items 5.5 through 5.7, because these are annual approvals and follow each other on the agenda. This is for solid waste services by suburban carding in the amount of 66, about $66,000. The past driver's education award, $445 per student, and the field and maintenance services award for 11, $110,000.
Plus hourly rates.
Plus hourly rates.
I move 5.5, 5.6, and 5.7. I'll second.
Any questions on any of these?
May I just add one thing, is that all three contracts have no increases, renewal. And then also, the first one, the 5.5, does our shared service with the town.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to ask for motion for both items 5.8 and 5.9, which are- I'd like to ask for motion for both items 5.8 and 5.9, which are both bids regarding the bond work. This would be a bid for special testing and inspections with a recommended award to Testcon Incorporated at various rates, and a bid for audiovisual equipment for the steam center with a recommended award to Video High Tech Corp. for about $72,000. May I have a motion in a second?
I move 5.8 and 5.9 together.
I will second. Does anyone have any questions?
John is here. Item 5.9, Video High Tech Corp., is that the company that put in all the stuff last summer, like the speakers for the new field and stuff?
This is for Seven Bridges Steam Center.
Are you asking if they did the auditoriums?
No, no, this is not the same group.
Okay, any other questions? Allison? Do you have a question? Okay. All right, all in favor of items 5.8 and 5.9, please say aye. We have a motion on item 5.10, which is a budget transfer of $110,000 to increase the appropriation for Bosie's Administrative Services. This is regarding special ed services.
Is it special ed services?
No, it's more...
Is it administrative services?
Contracted services with specific items that they supported our district with.
Oh, so I thought I read something about that. Okay, so this is purely administrative services?
Right, most of it's professional development.
I move item 5.10.
Okay, I will second. So, you can ask your questions.
Exactly. And the other question I have is, is this is for this school year?
For this school year.
So, are these administrative services, sort of the à la carte services?
That's right.
So, these are services that we opted into and now we're...
These are the additional services that we use this year.
Okay, I understand. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye. We have a motion to approve item 5.11, which is a very generous gift from the Bell PTA towards the purchase of audiovisual systems in the amount of $10,749.
I move item 5.11. I'll second.
I want to thank the Bell PTA for an incredibly generous gift.
And it's a very robust system.
Lauren wants to come to boring.
Absolutely, it's pretty cool.
And I think for a long time, Seven Bridges has had, you know, we have the Performing Arts Center at Seven Bridges, and Bell was the porcussen, and now, so the two schools will hopefully be a little bit more on.
But I think it'll be good for the faculty as well as the students to have something like that.
Sure, yes. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, item 5.12 is another annual approval, so may I have a motion to approve the contract for independent contractor services for technical operations of the Seven Bridges Performing Arts Center.
I move item 5.12.
I second.
Speaking of performing arts center.
And the amount is not to exceed $20,000 annually. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Item 5.13, we have a motion to approve the contract with sports gear for maintenance services of the turf field, beginning in the spring, and for seven additional years, $4,900 annually.
I move item 5.13.
This is a new contract for new fields?
John, does this include both fields, one stadium?
No, just one.
Just one.
Can I ask, why is it for seven years? That's a long time.
Because they only offer a year contract. However, attorney asked us to negotiate to adding the annual option, so if we're not happy, we can cancel.
Okay, that's good.
Right, that is quite a lengthy contract.
It's a very lengthy contract.
No, that sounds...
And what are the termination provisions? Is there a notice, or is it for cause?
Just a notice.
Okay. Okay, all right.
It's like an evergreen contract, you just have to notice in advance.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye. Item 5.14, may I have a motion to declare the attached list of items to be deemed no longer useful or necessary, and to be declared as surplus items to the school district, and to authorize the disposal of such items in accordance to law.
I move that item.
I'll second that.
I'm always scared I'm on a list, I always check.
So, I think, it looks to me that these are... Okay. These are mostly used servers.
Become obsolete.
Obsolete items. So, these are used servers and IBM electric typewriter.
IBM electric typewriter, that could be like a classic.
I'm not sure.
That's probably, you know, an antique at this point.
We could take it to the Smithsonian and see if they know what it is.
That's right.
Might be good learning, absolutely. A little bulk on that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Goodbye typewriter.
Okay, item 5.15, may I have a motion to approve contract for independent contractor services with AF Investigations. This is for residency investigations.
I move item 5.15.
I second that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Item 5.16, may I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding Green Pro Solutions being the sole provider of proprietary chemical turf products, and approving resolutions that the award of that, the award of the contract is not subject to competitive bidding.
I move item 5.16.
I'll second item 5.16.
I just want to know what Biotee is.
I can tell you. It's interesting, because we went and found products, if you look at the, what I refer to as the girls' field hockey field by the Colborne, which is the nicest field in this district, Joe had done a lot of research, and we were actually dumping tea, real water and tea, on the field, and that was sort of the test area for the district first, and the various prescriptions has worked really well.
Does it work on residential lawns? Or is it just for special kind of turf?
I believe it, I'm not telling you to go make a lot of green tea, that's what I mean, but I believe that it would work anyway.
Google Biotee.
John always has a green tea, so we can...
Okay, it's very interesting. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
I would just add that it is bio mean that, and they claim it's not harmful things to the environment. No pH changes, except for the aspartine you put in it.
Okay. Item 5.17, this is a resolution to accept the bid recommendation by Woodward and Curran to award the contract to Lorelei Industries for the Greeley Seafield.
I will move item 5.17.
I will second that.
Okay, and this is in the amount of $1.2 million.
This is in the amount of $1.248 million.
Any comments?
I would just comment that Lorelei is the same contractor that did the competition field. My opinion is that they did a very good job under some trying circumstances. Many of the issues that were associated with the competition field in terms of timing are no longer an issue, because we've done the Con Ed port and other ports.
Also, they are now going to use the same subcontractor.
They're going to be different subcontractors.
Different subcontractor, installation itself.
We raised a problem last time. And just want to let you know, this is really just a base bid, and separately, because we have co-op purchasing, so we are purchasing the lighting, the bleacher, and the equipment separately. So, this is not the total cost. Okay, I just don't want you to think that is 1.2 million.
It should be noted that we, I don't know if we approved, all the bids that came in did come in under the total that we were concerned about, which is the $42.5 million bond, so...
According to the architects, we're about $1.4 million below that right now.
That's even about $600,000.
Which also includes some soft costs, but does not include overages or whatever.
But we're early, because we've got, you'll see later in the agenda, we've got a lot more approvals, but it looks like, according to their architects, we're in a good place right now.
Yes. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye. Item 5.18, again, related to the bond, related to the high school and the library project. This is a resolution for the board to accept an award letter for the following contractors, MVM Construction, SNL Plumbing, Southeast Mechanical Corp., and RLI Electric Corp.
I move item 5.18.
Second.
Any questions?
This is a bulk of the work of the high school?
It's for the STEAM, yeah.
And the public library.
It's for the library. I'm not sure if it's specific to the STEAM lab, or...
No, this is for, basically for two buildings. One is Greeley, and one is for the public library. So, for Greeley includes the library, the L building, two levels, and a brand-new steam center, and K110.
Okay, yeah.
So, basically, after, if you approve this 5.18, basically what is left will be just a Greeley auditorium lobby. You remember last time we threw out the bids, but right now, we don't know exactly what we're going to do with that yet, so we're going to wait and see.
With the bidding process?
No, with the lobby.
With the lobby.
It could be part of a decision in terms of some security changes if we...
Right.
Okay.
So, but that cannot be done this summer anyway, so we figured that this will probably be a summer 2019 project, so we have time.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Aye.
How about we do this together? All in favor, please say aye. Okay. Item 5.19 is another annual approval, to approve an agreement with Civic Solutions. This is for...
Medical billing?
Medicaid.
Medicaid, okay. I will move item 5.19. May I have a second? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. I'd like to take items 5.20, 5.3, 5.22 together. These are educational services, contract with Deveraux, contract with Irvington Union Free School District, and contract with Byram Hills, all for instructional services.
I move item 5.20, 5.21, and 5.22.
I will second. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, item 5.23, this is a resolution to approve a four-year hardware lease for various computers, as recommended by Josh Block. And, yeah, may I have a motion in a second?
I move 5.23.
I'll second 5.23.
Any questions?
It is in the budget.
It's in the budget.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. We approve 5.24, which was the Twin Oaks. On the addendum, we have an item 5.25, which is related to compliance issues as stated in the agenda.
I move item 5.25.
I second. Any questions? All in favor?
I just wanted, yeah, I believe that we did not add the addendum to 4.1 when we moved 4.1. We didn't say as added when we approved 4.1. I'm not sure if we said it, or is it inclusive, or we had to say as...
Why don't we move item 4, addendum to item 4.1 now?
Whatever procedurally.
I just wasn't sure that, is it inclusive?
It's encompassed in there.
It's in the new agenda.
Okay. As long as it's in there, and we just want to be sure.
Right, it's not part of the agenda as an addendum.
Got it.
Okay, got it. Okay. Just double checking.
Yeah. Well, thank you, it's always good to check. Okay, we're up to facilities, and I'd like to take items 6.1 through 6.11. These are all acknowledgements of change orders. So, if everyone has had a chance to go through all of these change orders...
I move...
Eleven of them, so we have a motion to...
I move all of items six inclusive.
I second.
We move to recognize and acknowledge a notice of the change orders. Okay. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Regarding facilities, can I mention something?
Yes.
So, I guess it's sort of facilities. Yesterday, we had the, on the 5/22, we had the grand opening of the native plant learning garden right here at Greeley, and it was postponed once and for rain, it rained again yesterday. So, I guess rain's a good thing, because it's good for plants. I'm not a planter, I'm not a gardener, so I don't know. But they planted over 3,000 small plants that are for education, environmental, and aesthetic reasons. It's a collaborative partnership between the district, Greeley students, and volunteers. The idea was conceived by the parents, but is implemented by the parents and students in support of the district administration, district financial resources, and facilities. It's right here when you go past the main office. Karen Basic donated funds in memory of her husband to be used for outdoor furniture, which they're going to purchase and put in there. The idea is it's low maintenance, so it can resolve itself, so we don't have to have a lot of work on it. But the background, and the background of the concept and the project plan lists educational resources are all in binders in the main office and on the PTA website, and it's for the education of our students and our community. Planning includes longevity and succession plan by a subcommittee of the STOP Club and Mr. Joe Montori, and they're taking on the financial and management of that garden. So, I think it shows that, looks how we can think differently about our environment and not just learn in the classroom, but actually learn, use our outdoor facilities as well. And I know there are a lot of people doing this, but every time I came by, I just want to mention Lucille Rossi and Missy Reddell. They were here all the time weeding and planting, and so, my thank you to the PTA and to the garden committee, and for helping make our school more beautiful and education focused on environment.
Yeah, I think it sounds wonderful. It's great to have a focus on sustainability with native plants, and I want to thank everyone for volunteering and creating this beautiful space, and thank you, Warren, for going on our behalf.
You know, I was saying yesterday, I said, well, a lot of the plants are deer resistant. Well, if we get a deer in there, we got a big problem.
If they get hungry enough, they'll eat anything.
Right. So, get over it.
Okay, yeah, thank you, that was nice. So, now we'll move on to financials. We have a motion to accept the financial reports in items, through items 7.1 through 7.4, the appropriations, status report, revenue status report, treasurer's report, and the claim auditors report, all from April 2018.
I move item 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4. I note that that should be seven next to the financials, not six.
I second. Any questions? Yeah, I see it. All in favor, please say aye. Before we go to notice of future meetings, is there anything that you have left, Christine?
No, I'm just looking forward to being in the Memorial Day Parade again with the town, and I know we have a lot of great things happening as we begin to close up the school year, so I'm looking forward to being able to participate in those events with our kids and our faculty administration.
Yes, it's a fun time of year, and busy. So, notice of future meetings?
Can I just add, from the facilities, I mentioned it in one of these specific items, but that we did get all the bids, and we are looking, the bond project is moving along... Bond project is moving along successfully so far with bids of coming appropriately, so we anticipate during the beginning, having a lot of work this summer, hopefully, there could be, a lot of it, some of it to be completed this summer and some of it won't be at the, at the middle schools and the high school. So, I thank the community for approving of the bond and I thank the administration for administering the execution of it.
Good, moving right along, sounds good. Okay, so notice of future meetings, the next meeting will be on Wednesday, June 13th, here at the academic commons. It will be our last meeting of the year. We will do our farewells and we will honor the retirees. So, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move we adjourn the meeting, 9:06. 21:07.
I said it.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, good night.
Also, we're going to have a Memorial Day Parade.
We don't need to announce that yet.
Oh, you did say.
Christine, Christine.